We call it to order the January 14, 3 p.m. School Board Workshop. Please stand for a moment of silence and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go through roll call, please. All right, we'll go through roll call.
Rowfer is present to your phone.
Lauren Ramirez present. Janie Ready present.
Derek Lars here.
Kristi Chalk.
LaShaka Moore.
All right, so sections two, three, and four will be at our 6 p.m. Business Meeting. Go to 5.01. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
There are not any.
Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any public comments today? We'll move on to 7.01.
Good afternoon, Chair Mitchell and Board Member Lieutenant Moore. Ms. Whitmore and I are here to answer any questions you have on 7.01 through 7.07, starting with 7.01, Charter School Financials. I will just note, there were questions from Ms. Ready at the last meeting and speaking with the Regional Director over the finances for the Charter School. There are, in short, were some hidden rows, a formula error that corrected the $12,000 to your question with regard to the textbooks. While they haven't spent out their budget, the budget was, there was one line extra, so everything moved down one. So if you look at it now, it should be more in line with what your question was with regard to textbooks.
It still looked like they had spent less than half.
Yes, and they will continue to spend throughout the year, is what he said. Whatever doesn't get spent will just get pulled back.
Okay.
I think it's $18,000 now, and previously it was only less than $2,000.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate those updates.
Thank you.
Any other questions there?
I did have some questions on the, and this is through 707, correct?
I think we're just on 701 right now.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Nope, we're good, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to 7.02, if you have other questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Furry.
Just on the, on the NIFEC Risk Management Insurance. So you're paying about $2.4 million for, from that insurance. Is that about what we have in paying, or is that an increase?
This is for the '24-'25 fiscal year. This contract was approved in May or June of the prior fiscal year. This is a slight increase from the '23-'24 fiscal year. I want to say probably 2%, it was not a huge increase. And this covers workers' comp and building insurance.
Okay, and so they're broken up into so many different categories here. Why is it done that way?
Sure, and I had another board member with the same question too. So, the workers' comp insurance is to cover all of our employees. So how this calculation is done is we take all of the payroll and every line that it hits, and we do a pro-rata portion. So for example, if you're looking at page one there, first line, 510011. That is the instructional staff at Buddy Taylor. And then going down is on every single school. 10 lines down is 520011. That's the ESE staff at Buddy Taylor. So we have to create this massive spreadsheet to make sure that the costs are allocated properly across all of the instructional and non-instructional staff at our schools. This is something that the auditors have recommended to make sure that the costs are aligned properly. So this is the way this requisition is done every year. It is hundreds of lines to get through, but it is properly allocated based on everyone's pro-rata portion.
I see, okay. And do we, do we just kind of default to NIFEC for this insurance? Is that just part of our benefit of our association, that we're getting the best rate through them?
We are part of their consortium. I will need to default to Mr. Royhan, is it? I will default to him to answer that question, as he is the one that works directly with them.
Yeah, so this is a part of our benefits through, through NIFEC, and we have found historically to get the best rate going this, this route.
Okay, so we have, we have confirmed that we are getting competitive rate for this, this insurance?
Yes, being part of the consortium, I mean, we do get the, the benefit of being with the consortium. And, you know, it covers a lot through the risk management, through liability, through workers' comp.
Building insurance.
Building insurance. Oh, it is a wide variety, and being part of the Risk Management Board, we sit with NIFEC for, you know, contracts that have been approved by NIFEC for, you know, mitigation through other vendors, through other companies like Belfort. If we have damages at some of our property that can be on our site, if we can't, you know, mitigate some of that. So, absolutely.
Okay, and that basically, we're getting a better deal because of the consortium, because we're grouped together with other districts?
Correct.
Right, okay. Thank you.
To follow up on that, I would say that we, that's probably for sure accurate, that we're getting a better deal and so forth, that we work through a consortium like that. I guess the question would be, is, have we looked recently to make sure and verify that that is the best price that we can get, even though, you know, is there something better out there? I know 2% may not be that much based off of, you know, even your homeowner rates and things of that nature going up, and car rates, I get that. But have we checked that just to do our due diligence?
Yes, we, we have, and that is a part of the Board as well. Also, the NIFEC Board also going out to see, to make sure we have the most competitive rate. So we, we definitely have looked into that.
I guess like that's, that was my question, that, and as well as Mr. Furry's. When you say, was that done recently? Like, how often is that looked at? I'm just wondering if there's a way, like, what, is it, how often is it looked at? Or when was it last looked at?
How often?
It's on annual?
Yes, it is, it is done annually.
So annually, it was looked at in the June-July timeframe?
The contract was approved in May or June, so it would have been prior to that, right, Tommy?
Correct.
Prior to them approving.
And then we, we as the Risk Management Board approve it, and then it goes to the Executive Board of NIFEC for approval, and then it ends up for our Board, for your Board approval.
So then, this June-July, or May-June, it will be looked at? So all of the items, like the IS system, anything will be looked at again, and then to see?
All of that, all of that will be brought back.
So that will be done in May, June, May, all right?
And also looking at not just, what is the, are we getting the best rate today? But how do we sustain a, a rate that is affordable for us as an organization? And then the consortium as a whole?
Is there a way, when it's looked at, so to have like itemizations per services? Like, for example, like the IS system, it's approximately, would be this much, but then if it was from another organization vendor, or, you know, it would cost this? Just to kind of see, is that what you're doing in May or across?
So for the IS, that's part of the consortium.
That's just an example, yeah.
But yeah, but, so me personally, I would, I would deal with all the risk management. So workers' comp, liability, building, property casualty.
But when the, when the contract, the entire NIFEC contract comes before you, you will see how much it is that we pay for each service.
Okay.
That will be in the NIFEC contract as a whole. This portion here is for risk management, yes.
This is one of probably several different sections in the NIFEC contract.
June 18 of 2024 was the contract was presented.
Any other question?
Not related to that specifically, but on the same page. So, I've noticed, like, most of it's like, some of the line items would say per FCSD, I got that. And there's a couple like per Bradford County Sheriff's Office, or per Marion County. Is that, are we just piggybacking off of their contract, or?
So, a year or two ago, the, some of the board members on the previous Board wanted to understand what contract we were using, if we were using local vendors or not. So what we did in our Finance Department is we ensured that when the bookkeepers would submit the requisitions, it cited the contract. If you're seeing a contract and not a bid number, we are piggybacking off of that contract, or using a state bid, or a co-op, so it's a co-op.
Co-op, okay, yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
It's just for informational purposes.
That's, I was just curious if we were just piggybacking off of that particular agency or what have you? Okay, thank you.
Any others on this agenda item?
Thank you.
All right, 7.03, vendor payments.
I had a couple of questions on there. I see that there is a charge for some architect consulting, and I was wondering, is that for the Matanzas buildout, or is?
Can you tell me the vendor name? Or their check number?
Sorry, I should have had that. Let's go back.
328, 488.
Nice, you're quick.
That is for FPC, it is for the softball complex that we are redoing. The construction is for the redoing of the dugout, the concession stand, and part of the fields.
Okay, so all of that expense for that improvement has already been approved? Or is this in order to determine the cost?
Sure, the PO was approved months ago, and what you're seeing here on this vendor payment is payments being made against that already approved order.
Thank you. I also see some payments made to Barbizon. I was wondering if you could tell me what that service is about?
Barbizon Charlotte?
Yes.
That is through technology, through sales tax fund, and it is for touchscreen monitors at Matanzas, and that is specifically for the expansion.
Oh, okay. And then it looks like there's a couple of, you know, beyond the Sniffin and Spellman legal services, it looks like there's some other vendor payments made to various legal entities. And are, is there an area where I could see what we're procuring services for, for this different legal entity?
Could you give me a vendor name?
I believe Morgan &amp; Morgan was one, and then, I don't know how to pronounce it, I apologize, HAYT, H-A-Y-T.
H-A-Y-T, that is, that is not an attorney. It is a company that an employee sends their benefits to. Most likely that is, was 2177?
It's payroll deduction.
It's, yeah, it's payroll deduction, has nothing to do with attorney services. It's some kind of, I don't really say.
It's an employee.
Says it's other employee withholding?
Yes. So it might be them making payments for?
Something else.
Something else, unrelated, yes.
Benefit of some sort, but we're not sure.
Well, it's a deduction, so it could be like their garnish wages, yes.
Oh, I see, okay.
The Morgan, and Morgan one was the result of a former employee's legal action that they had proven against the school district, and that was partial payout. The other payout, portion of the payout went to the actual former employee. So any further questions on that actual payout? I would defer to the Superintendent in a separate conversation, as we are not proving.
So that's part of the agreement, that those fees were covered?
Yes.
I see.
That was the settlement.
Got you, thank you.
Any other questions?
For? I have a lead, about, on page nine, for this GEMTEX. For $63,000, this is from back in November, where the first order. Is this not, is this trailing in our expenses from our original implementation? Or is this not in the column of your firm that you're able to?
Yeah, Mr. Furry, Mr. Royhan here. That is our sentecics contract that is. Yeah, Mr. Furry, Mr. Woolie in here, that is our sentecics contract that is our five-year, part of our five-year contract, so that's an annual, that was the annual payment for, for year two.
Okay, and is that for their
The crisis alert system.
Support.
Is it for support?
Is it for support? It was part of the, the contract that was approved in 2023.
Equipment software.
Yeah, equipment software.
A scheduled payment. Would this be a real contract?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there another question?
For the three payouts regarding cases, so Scott, come on. Yeah, so Gavin, Peacock, Martha are in here. How many more will be showing up?
I don't have that information. I am sure that there are, it's always ongoing legal stuff. I don't know that. That's probably a part of an executive session, I do believe.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Any other questions? We'll move on to 7.04.
There are no deletions for this month. We just wanted to leave that on for transparency purposes.
7.05. Any concerns there? All right, 7.06, professional development travel. And 7.07, district financial statements.
I did just want to know, as part of the district financials, a question was asked and has been previously asked by the board about the scholarships, the family empowerment scholarship. I did want to just note that I have added a fourth page to the district financials PDF just for full transparency of the FES scholarships and the past history of when it started out of legislation out of 2020. I will continue to add that each month. When the third cap is received, that budget will be removed from the revenue and expense as it becomes a reality and not just an estimate. So if there's any questions on that, I will be happy to take that at this time. And again, I have added a second attachment for legal cost, which was a previous request by a board member.
I really appreciate the transparency on those two items, specifically the family empowerment scholarship. I'm curious, when these are pulled out, are these numbers coming from the state, or are these like self-reported numbers?
When it first started, it was information that the state would provide to us, and we would have to put in our information software student side. As of two years ago, the state has completely taken over. Those numbers are given to us. They're a part of our FTE number. So when we forecast every February, the state tells us what the scholarship FTE is. And when we get our first calc, they give us the revenue amount based on their FTE. We have no control over it.
Right, right. This might be a separate question for Ms. Moore, but when those PEP funds start to come in, how is, how should we be seeing that reflected in the financial statements? And again, what is the timeline on that? I know there's a delay.
So the family empowerment scholarship, I felt was appropriate to include in financials because it is a direct part of the FAFP. The PEP scholarship does not impact FAFP. So if we have students that are taking that PEP scholarship and want to take classes with us, that will be added to our revenue. And once that starts getting added, we can figure out how to be very transparent about this, whether it's a separate report like this. Because the funds will not be anywhere near this amount. It will not even, I mean, it would be a separate line item that we would have to somehow create, but we're, we're subject to FTE guidelines with charter accounts.
Right, it would just be our own kind of insight.
I believe the best part of reporting that would be similar to what we've done here is showing, this is the first year of PEP. Here's how many students took it, because that could be a direct result of us losing students. And then the actual cost of what we're receiving if they take a class.
Right, right. The reason that I'm pressing for those metrics is because I'm really hoping over the next three years that the programs that we're providing that show different, maybe non-traditional settings or programs that we can see the impact of that in terms of a flattening of the curve for students moving out 100% to those scholarship programs, as well as an increase, right? So we see some attraction and additional investment back in the public schools from those who are more apt to go the homeschooling route. So I'm hoping that we set some goals around monitoring that and, and seeing if our efforts are paying off with those metrics.
All right, these are conversations we've had with our senior management, as well as IS and state services.
I appreciate the insight. Thanks so much.
And also remembering to, as we, once we are identifying what those metrics will be, that some of the individuals that may be taking scholarships, maybe students that have never been in a flag of schools before. And so just kind of balancing out, what does that look like in relation to the enrollment, our enrollments and withdrawal as well? Looking at those students who are withdrawing for homeschool purposes or going to pay off, as well as the students that we're getting into, getting in from enrollment new to us, coming to us from a private or a homeschool setting. So it will definitely be a conversation that we will have to look at of around what type of data are we going to be looking for? And which reports can we pull to support that?
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on 7.07?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 9.01, Mr. Reeves.
Good afternoon, board members. Superintendent Moore. Before you today, we have a couple of travel events. We have five for students and one for staff. Students, one include Indian Trails Middle School that is going to its Desbian event over in Orange County. FPC has an SGA state conference, and our Starlights have a competition in Tampa. And Matanzas High School Blue Steel will be performing down in the Keys for a concert and competition and a decatrip as well. Any questions?
Amazing. Great stuff.
I just want to say thank you for addressing the comment that we have related to the trip and making some corrections on the hotel portion for the Starlight, or, I'm sorry, Starlights, I apologize for them. So appreciate that and answering my questions. Absolutely, sir.
All right, 9.02.
This is our third year of trying to do this. I try and make an effort for our professional learning community to give opportunities for our specialists to travel, to get experiences from around the country. And this year, it's Ms. Alba's, a trip for the National Science Educational Leadership Association. She has served our district faithfully for over a decade in her capacity and has served the state as the chair, president of the FAST organization. And this is this trip that we're paying for the Title II funds for her to attend this national conference.
And I see Ms. Presley will be a presenter at a conference, so I'll say congrats to her.
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Okay, 10.01, Mr. Bush.
Good afternoon, board members. Superintendent Moore. Here for the revision of the 2024-2025 use of facility handbook and non-paying limited use. If you look at the handbook on page two, the first was just updating the board members. On page eight, we added the district administration or designee to that verbiage. And then on page 13, the fee table, we added administrative downwards the bottom, right there. We added administrative coverage of $75 per hour to cover for administration needed at the schools when we have a, an event that has over 100 people at it, along with security that we've also added. We just didn't have some verbiage in there for that, for the cost, correct?
So does that mean that we were paying that expense before, or, and it was just, or was that it was volunteer before?
A little of both, and some of it also was falling on where we found that our issue is that custodial, when they were there doing cleaning, they were kind of being leaned on as that administrative person, and we felt that custodial should not be that person. There should be some people at the facilities that are in the administrative capacity. So getting with the team, that's where we talked about, what does this look like and how do we implement that?
So what will be the projected financial impact of that? Because we have quite a few activities and, you know, at each school, typically, the school-based administration kind of split up and divide and conquer. So does that mean that we're, or is it when they can?
No, this is strictly for when someone in our community is renting our facility. So when they're utilizing our facility, that is what this is for. So this will be for items that are outside of the scope of the work of our administrator and outside of the day.
I see. So it's separate from our school-based activities. Thank you.
Just being paid for by whomever is going to be renting the building to cover those costs.
Great.
That's correct. The question that I had, just to make sure we come up with the $75, that's, where did that come from? How do we derive from that? And I just wanted you to kind of, just for record and so forth, where that comes from and what's included in that $75 and how we're covering that.
So we came up with a, that it's a flat fee to cover, but that covers the hourly rate plus all of their benefits for the administrator, whoever is being asked to work that.
And what we, we looked at, when we look at our administrators, that amount was somewhere in the average of the hourly rate for those individuals who would be covering. And it also gives our community members an opportunity to be able to plan and project what their cost would be. Because if it would be based on who is covering, that could be, one, it will delay the process, but it becomes timely as well. This also follows what we do currently for our, for our custodial services as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
I know I've asked this before, but on Sundays, you know, a lot of churches rent our buildings. So is the designee, just, could that just be anybody who's on staff with flag of schools, or like, how are we addressing that?
And for our church, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, leave him out.
For our churches that we have long-time relationships with, this would not necessarily apply to them. There may be events that are being held outside of the scope of their current agreement that would require that, but this is outside of those agreements that we have with our current churches.
These are one-offs, basically.
Yes.
Correct. And for instance, this past weekend, we had, there was a gymnastics event at FPC that was a new customer. FPC hadn't dealt with them. They were new, so, and it was a two-day event. So previously, that was where it was kind of the gray area. How did we cover that? Where now we have administration covering the whole weekend for that event.
And as we get better with making sure we have written standard operating procedures and expectations, this is going to, to help us to, again, have some consistency across our use. Again, we feel very strongly that if someone is going to come and use our facilities and it's going to be a large crowd, or depending on what the event that is happening, that there may be a need for an administration to be on the campus to make decisions that are needed, and we needed that to be beyond the scope of the duties of our custodians, who they do a great job, but just outside of their scope of responsibility.
And this being in Facilitron, where people will go in and figure out how much that's going to be based off of, you know, they input the information and so forth. So where do, if I'm a new, I'm a citizen, I'm, you know, I'm from our community and I want to rent one of our facilities, how will they be have, easily have access to this so they'll understand or kind of have a general idea of what their costs are going to be?
So they, we have our use of facility specialist Pam Billy. They contact with, they go through Facilitron. It's on the community side. They have to, you know, set up, there's a whole process of filling that out, checking the, you know, the insurance, and she follows that process. And along there, there's a checklist of, you know, what is it that they're going to be doing? How many people do they plan on having there? So there's a list of checklist, if you will, in direction of what's going, that event's going to take place at that. But it's our, Facilitron is where that starts, that also manages that, does, collects the payments and all of that through that program.
Yeah. And the reason I'm asking that question is based off of the conversation that you and I had yesterday with a community member that is calling about, you know, the cost and how much that is and so forth, and really making sure that the community understands what it costs to use our facilities and how much it costs to make sure we're cleaned up, ready to go before it's turned back over to our students to come back in. So it's just important to make sure that this is accessible, available, and we can point them in the right direction to understand before they click the button that we want, they want to do this, so they don't come back and are questioning, why is it this amount or that amount?
Correct. So when they're doing all that, they will know what they're going to be charged unless, you know, if they say they're going to be there five hours for some reason, if it runs six, seven hours, obviously then it would be additional charges and we work with them on that. But they typically, they will know what they're going to have to pay prior to that.
It's on the information.
Correct, for their agreement, that they're aware of that.
And this handbook will also be located on the website once updated and approved, will be located on the website so that they can see what it looks like for, for cost.
I'd be surprised if they challenge it, because it's very competitive if you've ever tried to throw a family party, graduation event, right? Even the city of Palm Coast's facilities are much more expensive, so.
And I've used the program and seen it. It's very easy to use. You can understand. It's like very streamlined. For the administrators, does it matter what campus or will they float? And I don't know if that's, like, say, if it's Vanel and no administrator is available, would it be open, like, an opportunity for any administrator? Or are you focusing on?
That will come through the district office. So in the event that, there is an event that is happening at Vanel Elementary School and no one is there to cover it, the district staff, we will work to identify who is available to cover that. The cost will be the same.
All right, any other questions on that agenda?
No. Again, I just want to thank Mr. Bush for being responsive and helping me as we work together with a community member related to this topic. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then 10.02, we're taking a look at that again.
So yes, I brought this, it's the project party list, and I brought this to you on December 17th. And just briefly going over, it's the Matanzas, first floor carpet on the building one, two, five, and six. And then at Pavelter Elementary School, the portables, plan is still to start that around March 1st. Just bringing this.
Can I ask why it's brought forth again? Was there a modification?
No, ma'am. I, I probably didn't need to bring it till this one. But I brought it as the information.
So, yeah, let me give a little technical point answer. So, Mr. Bush, this item came through your information agenda, and then it's going to go to your, your board meeting. Most items that are like this typically start here, and then they go to your work, to your board workshop, your board meeting. If an item starts at information, it goes information. That's where we have the most heavy part of the conversation. You, as a board member, will give direction to us for more information that you may want to hear. If there's no additional information you, you're looking for or we need to clarify, this is how the presentation will go. We brought this to you before. If there are any additional questions, if not, you'll see this again at your 6 o'clock board meeting.
And so this is the component of the five-year plan that you're prepared to act on in the, in this short term, is what you're saying?
This is the CO and DS funds, so part of using, whenever we use those funds per DOE, there's a two-step process. You have to have a survey, which I have to bring forth in front of you all. And then whenever I break that down as far as what projects we want to do, the project part of this, which is this of just specific projects from the survey, we have to bring that, because once you approve it, I have to send that to DOE to show that you all have approved it. And then it goes in front of their person that has to, I forget the gentleman's name, that has to approve it and sign it saying that the funds that we used have been approved and allocated to the right thing and not spending.
I guess the reason why I ask the question is because, you know, you, you put together this big plan, and as you alluded, there's several steps in this process, and the estimate can be different by the time you actually go to execute these improvements. So at what point do you So at what point do you find out how accurate your estimate was?
As far as the...
On these costs, right.
When we have the contractor come in and give us a pricing on the, I mean, typically we're, for the carpet, what we're doing, and that's what I've been trying to use the CO and DS funds on, we've been pretty good because it hasn't fluctuated like some of the other construction has. The good thing about the CO and DS funds, it's, it's not a use it or lose it. So if whatever is there and we spend that, it will roll to the next year. You know, obviously if there's not enough in there, then that's a different story. But luckily, so far, we haven't, we haven't had that issue using those funds. I'm not sure if that...
Yeah, I guess, you know, in our previous discussion, and you illuminated this whole process, I was just wanting, because of this delay where you're trying to project, but, you know, pricing is changing all the time, how accurate, and if we could see some trends, well, if it looks like these costs are going up, that's going to impact our estimated cost, maybe we need to revise that. Does that take place?
On the carpet, it's not as, it doesn't fluctuate. But on other construction costs, absolutely. I mean, that's one of our biggest challenges in our department of, you know, getting pricing or doing the budget, when we do the budget for the five-year capital plan. And we're doing that, and then when we actually do the project, we do try to factor that in there when we do those budgets, and then if, if the cost comes in, then it's higher than what we budgeted, and then I have to look at the projects, and sometimes a project may have to move to the right to cover what that project is that we feel is more important than the other ones.
Right. I'm looking for, like, when does that get communicated to us in the schools in terms of an early, an early bellwether? Hey, things are kind of going askew and it doesn't look like we're going to be able to meet our entire goal this year.
So, may I clarify the question that you're asking? Are you asking, for instance, if this wasn't carpet for Matanzas High School, we've estimated a cost of $172,000. If that cost is actually going to be $200,000, at what point are you as a board member, where do you come in and know that we've gone outside of what that estimated cost?
And find out what we're modifying, what we're choosing to change in the capital, in the five-year capital plan.
We don't, typically, that's part of operation. The funds that we're using are all in the same bucket if...
Sure.
Using from Patty.
I guess from my perspective, just to share why I'm asking.
So how often is the five-year brought to them so that they can see what we've done? So annually, you would get that, but you as a board member, you can, you can definitely request, what was our changes? Have we made any, any changes beyond that?
And that's what I'm trying to get to at this point.
Yes.
But you're saying you don't have the actual concrete price, so we don't know at this point if there are changes.
But this...
Sorry. You would also know that if it wasn't a project that we haven't done a PO for, you would also see it, I mean, then if it was a budgeted project and then when we got ready to do the project, you had to do a PO, then, and if it was more, you would see that PO come when it, on the $10,000 and over.
You know, there's like thousands of items on those, on those better payments to approve. And so when I'm trying to ensure that a school is being advocated for, or an item that's particularly of a community interest, that I want to make sure we retain on that five-year plan, I want it to be very easy and clear as opposed to doing like a forensic analysis of where all of the, because this is massive, as you know, because you live this every day and you do a superb job at it. And so I just need to be able to keep up with you without having the ability to spend, right, every day in that accounting space.
So at this time, when it comes to the five-year plan, it is annual that you will get an opportunity to see what, what have we accomplished or how have things shifted? But if you as a board member had a question about anything that's shifting that we don't think that we're going to meet the goal to, then you would then need to just pose that as a question. But right now, it is annual that that is brought before you.
Okay. So essentially, every quarter, I'd have to bring it up and say, what did we, what does it look like is dropping off the list this year?
If that's how frequent you would want it as a board member, yes.
Any other questions?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will add that when it comes to our five-year plan, the team does a really good job of budgeting and trying to stay within their contingency when it comes to that plan. The things, if something is bumped, it is something that has come up that was not projected. You know, maybe, you know, some, something breaks that, that is a large cost. That's usually when things are bumped from, from that plan.
Just to caveat back on that real quick before we get move on. So contingency plan, I'm glad you brought that up. So how much is in the contingency plan? We talking 10%, 20%? How much is in there to cover some of this unexpected cost, potentially?
It, for us, when we go the project...
You're just going into a particular project, right?
It's per, per project, and it's there, so, I mean, we try to have a 5 to 10% in the large projects. I mean, we, I, we don't have, like, when I sit down with Patty, we don't say, okay, here's a contingency for the, the entire budget.
No, but you're doing it for that particular project.
That's correct.
And so to cover what we're talking about, Ms. Rudd is referring to, I think, be able to help cover some of that. If we have an increase in something, we're covering that with this 5 to 10%. So hopefully that, that cost will be covered in the contingency that you're putting into that project.
That is, that's the plan. Correct. That's the goal.
That's what I was saying. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, 11.01, board approval of personnel items.
Vice Chair Chang, Board Members, Superintendent Moore, I do have the most up-to-date personnel items for this month. As you know, this is a living document, it will continue to grow and change up until the required board meeting for action. Do you have any questions?
Just real quick, I saw, sorry. And I think on this one is, and I think we mentioned it before, on the exit interviews with employees to ensure that we're not seeing any type of pattern. I don't know that we necessarily are, but if, if we do begin to see something like that, whatever it may be, X, Y, or Z, just, I'd ask if we could just bring that to us as, you know, we're seeing this so it can be addressed, or at least make us aware of that during these reviews.
Absolutely. And I know that was one of the things that was previously asked, and I know that Josh and I, since that discussion, and, you know, I mean, transparency previous boards have had similar questions as well, and over time, we have gone from our starting point and what we had to, to kind of changing and beefing up what we've done with exit interviews. And so since that last discussion, I did ask that Josh and I kind of sit down and go through the state of our exit interviews since this fiscal year, which beat July 1. And so I'm going to give Josh just a bit of time to kind of share some of that right now.
Absolutely. So good to be in board. Whenever we have an employee voluntarily leave the district, whether it is a resignation or retirement, our staff is then emailing that employee a exit survey. It's linked to a Google form that they are then able to complete. We send it to their professional email, and then if we have a personal email out file, we also send it there. That way, we're increasing the visibility and hopefully increasing the chances of getting a response. From July 1 till right now, or does it yesterday, we had 107 surveys sent out with 51 responses, giving us a response rate of about 48% for this fiscal year, July 1 through January 13. When we look at that data, just on a grand scale of things, it's pretty much evenly split. We're at about 51% of our instructional staff make up of those 51 responses, 43% are non-instructional, with about 6% in that admin professional wing, so to speak. So of those 51 responses, those are the employee types that make up those responses. When we dive into the reasons why they're leaving, it's pretty spread across the board. So of the 51 responses, I, of those, I would say 10, well, 10 are family slash personal reasons. That makes the biggest percentage of it at about 19.6%. And that's one of the areas we ask. However, there's also other areas such as health problems and relocation. If you add up those, so relocation was six and health problems was five, that gives 21 out of 51, essentially due to a family or a personal reason. The next biggest one, I would say underneath that, or the most pronounced, would be inadequate salary. Those were just nine out of the 51 responses, making up about 17.6% of the overall pie, so to speak. So what we do is we ask them, hey, what are your reasons? Why? Just some of the reasons for separations we've been given are child rearing, continuing education, entrepreneurship, family personal reasons, health problems, inadequate salary. We give them a good amount, and those are the main ones that get targeted on responses.
Are there any responses that would warrant, like, where you reach out to them for a personal conversation?
Absolutely. We have a section on our exit survey that states, would you like to be contacted by a human resource supervisor or admin? If so, please provide your information. Once those people submit those, my team lets me know, hey, we have a hit, so to speak, and I'll reach out to them and set up a time to speak.
And of those responses that you've had, did anybody...
Yeah, we've had a few. And a lot of it was just explaining family circumstances. Some of our responses was a wish to have remote work, higher salary, and those were kind of the, the main points of it.
So I see, actually on here, your role is moving from eight hours to seven hours?
Yes. At the time, when I came on board with HR, we, we wrote the job description based on the payroll and benefit supervisor that had gone from the HR department to the payroll department. And when we did that, somewhere in the shuffle of adjusting for Skyward, that payroll benefits person had always, always been a seven hour. And in mirroring that position, we'd actually made Josh eight, when, in actuality, where it is on the pay scale and all the other positions within that, that lane are the seven hour, which is in, in line with my seven hour and all senior staff's seven hour and the director level and the, the next stop's below director level's seven hour. And if you go back to the history that predates everybody in this room, we could probably talk about archivally why they did seven hours at that time. So it's in keeping with past practice and that level of employee.
I was just kind of wondering how many hours does Mr. Walker actually work? Does he work seven hours?
Josh comes in...
I kind of doubt that.
Josh comes in at 7:30 with me and he's usually still here at, you know, 3:30 or 4:00 when, when people are...
That's why I was saying that he's responsible in late hours, and I appreciate that, so.
So how many times or how many instances have we had to essentially cut pay when they were working a particular number of hours? And is there essentially a, like, for example, if it's not caught that there's an administrative error in their tier before two months or something, then they're...
Well, this didn't actually reflect a, a cotton pay. The, the, the pay would commensurate with the lane, and the lane was a seven-hour lane. So he was actually, you know, donating an hour to us.
Okay, so it did not change the reimbursement? And the other people who were hourly and moving up hours, they are already hourly employees as opposed to salary? Okay.
Yeah. And these, by understanding, are things that is being looked at overall by, you know, future salary study.
Great. Any other questions on 11.01? We'll move on to 18...
Thanks for that. Appreciate you all.
18.01?
18.01. Just as a course of regular order, the school district conducts MOUs with other educational institutions, and, you know, we're all familiar with the local ones, the Daytona State College, you know, Bethune-Cookman, University of North Florida. This is a newer one that's come our way, and I would kind of put them in the same lane as Grand Canyon University, which is, you know, a private for-profit that teachers or other folks like to get advanced degrees from due to the nature of the hours that they offer their coursework and things like that. I know that Mr. Roberson actually met with the representative from WGCU, WGU, and actually might actually be headed out to a, a further meeting with her regarding some of the things that they might be able to do for us as far as incentives. They're at a different place where private folks can sometimes offer things back to the school board that, you know, our, our state and universities can't really do with us. So this is the standard agreement that basically says we will take their interns, we will help them with, you know, their project work, and we'll be receptive to that. We will put their supervisors on our campus to allow them to, you know, go ahead and review the work of their, their candidates and their, and their students. And so this is, like I said, pretty standard from what we have with other, other schools.
Yeah, first of all, this is great. Just, I was curious, because I've worked with their nursing students in the past, if they don't do like a GPA system, it's like a pass or fail, are they kind of doing the same thing or continuing with that?
I didn't go too deep in the weeds on their grading system, but I know that a lot of the for-profits do a pass/fail, a lot of them do trimesters, a lot of them do things that, you know, would actually advance them through their coursework more expeditiously than some of the public schools.
Yeah, they're more competency-based and project-based, but I think this is great to see, you know, turn into more.
And like I said, over the course of each year, you'll see more of these as, as we speak with the outside higher education folks.
And this is just a partnership and not a financial burden on the, on the district as well for this?
No. Currently, the only one that has a potential financial burden is coming out of Daytona State College based on new legislation, where we would have the opportunity to take existing paraprofessionals and send them through Daytona State. The caveat is, is the way the state funded it at this point, is I'd be coming to you for a request out of general fund to pay for their education. What the state decided to pay for was for Daytona State College to go ahead and stand up the curriculum. So, you know, would be my great hope that in addition to standing up the curriculum, it'd also provide us with funds so that we could send the pairs through it instead of on our dime.
Now, this is great, yeah. WGU is pretty well-respected in, for adults returning, like professionals returning to get advanced degrees. That's really... Any other comments or questions? We'll move on to 18.02, school board policy 665.
18.02, school board policy 665. Since I posted this on board docs, there has been a further revision that I would, I would hope that the board would take, and we'll be putting this on there as well for your consideration. And this was based on discussion with a board member, and my original plan when we were working on this policy was to really just tweak at one piece of the policy, but going deeper, it really did need further clarification and bootstrapping to the existing state statutes. So if you look at the blue sections that were added since the last time I posted this, the blue section basically reflect verbatim state statute 101227 and 101233. And I think by striking through what was the originally, originally one in that policy and then kind of beefing up one and it's subheading A, it really does a much better job clarifying the reasoning for what's being done and the ultimate results of what's being done when you decide to, at the superintendent's discretion, put someone on unpaid leave.
And this is, received the stamp of approval from Sniffman Spelman?
It received the stamp of approval from Mr. Delaney. That's who I initially ran through. So absolutely.
And because this is a change that you have not had an opportunity to see, this will be posted on board docs for the public, and we will bring this back before you at the 1 o'clock meeting on the 28th. If the board is prepared to move forward, we do, we will be requesting your action at the 28th meeting, your 6 p.m. meeting. If there is a need to further delay this, then this will come back before you in February. So this one is going to follow a different path. It's here before you today. Because these changes you have not seen, it will be updated, it will be posted, it will come back before you at the 1 o'clock and the 6 o'clock. If you're not ready to take action on the 6 o'clock meeting, we will bring this back before you in February.
Yeah, I think, I think from this really... I think from, this really clarifies, makes things more clearer as what the superintendent can do, and we're looking at this based off of what the statute tells us, and we need to make sure that we're staying within what the statute says. And this puts it right here in black and white for us to be able to review. So, I think this really clears up some of the questions that I know that I had with this, so I appreciate that very much. And so, just to piggyback off what Ms. Rose said, so Mr. Delaney read this particular portion, not the one in red?
Mr. Delaney has read the one in red. I have not had a chance since the revision right here to get that stamped, but I absolutely have that.
And I did speak with him today about this, and he knows what the plan is. He will have reviewed this again before the 28th.
And so, we can ask him that specific question at our informational meeting prior to, to make sure that he doesn't have any issues, or we can be made aware of that.
Yes, absolutely. So, it will come back. Before, I did speak to Mr. Delaney today, prior to this meeting, informed him of these changes. He will have reviewed it before your 28th meeting. It will come before you twice on that day. The 1 p.m., that is for any additional changes that you would like to make. We will be seeking action on it at that 6 p.m. meeting. However, if the Board is not prepared to take action, we will continue to move forward. This policy is an example of some of the policies that we need to update prior to taking, going fully with our Neola policies. So, some policies are going to come before you that we're going to need to update and approve with the understanding that it will change again with Neola, or possibly change, some additional changes may be made with us adopting the Neola suite.
So, I have a question about the area in blue, because that's new, right? Previously, it was very clear in terms of the time period, right, of that it said shall not exceed the next school board meeting. I'm just curious, I'm not as clear about the time period with this new verbiage. Are we restricted, or is it leaving it more open?
No, because it says, and I think the key piece on this is what they say is immediately. So, in other words, if the superintendent were to put somebody on unpaid leave on a Tuesday, 2 weeks before the board meeting, on that Tuesday evening or, you know, Wednesday morning, you'd be notified of what the superintendent had done, and then it would end up on the personnel action document that we discussed, you know, 2 pieces ago, it would end up on that.
Then A, A is what you're asking. So, you will be notified immediately of that, but we still will be.
Extending to and including the day of the next regular special meeting.
Yep. So, it doesn't give it a numeric day, it just, it gives us the next board meeting, and then the actual vehicle for that is the personnel action document that you see every meeting.
Yep.
So, it's quite possible you can see it 3 times before you took the final action on it, depending on, because I see, I bring personnel action documents at every time we need.
I guess it's just A sounds like it's supplemental. The school superintendent also possesses, so does that mean that the timeline is also associated with Roman numeral 1? Or because that's modified, that it's a specific emergency situation? Yeah, so, obviously, I'm not a lawyer, so, but I would be a little bit more comfortable about some clarity from Mr. Delaney about the need for that specific time instruction in Roman numeral 1. And so, when you provide this new information to him, will we have been informed ahead of the January 28th about his notes regarding this?
Yes, 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 we can definitely, any change, suggestion, changes, we can definitely provide that to you. And fairness to Attorney Quick, he doesn't have a copy of this in front of him right now. We were not intended to have a conversation, but provide you with this copy and update. So, he's not able to kind of chime in right now, because he does not have this information right now. It will come before you at a full discussion at the January 28th meeting.
And the goal was not to, the original one was an interpretation of statute, okay? And that was, you know, the blue now, no interpretation of statute.
Oh, no, I agree. I like taking it right out, right? But it just, the timeline in which we have to act, I just would want to make sure that that is going to apply to both of those sections.
Well, the first way I read this, help me if I'm wrong here, the first part is just laying out, it's just laying it out. This is what happens. You're given, if something happens, drunkenness, or being convicted, or found guilty, and so on and so forth, all the things that are listed here, I'm setting the stage for you. And A is now telling what the superintendent can do if you mess up or you fall into this category, what the superintendent can do to you, and when that timeline is.
I take that a little differently, because the first line says, the school superintendent also possessed the authority to suspend members of the instructional staff and other school employees during emergencies. So, that is separate from the provisions in Roman numeral 1.
Well, an emergency could be, I drive the bus intoxicated. That is an emergency for a school board. So, we're not thinking of abroad, we're thinking the individual incident that created.
Right. I understand that, my response was that, you know, these are the situations in which this could occur, and then this is, so a cause-effect. I don't see that as clear cause-effect. I see is that there's a modifier sentence there that I feel.
Because the I, and I is really about any staff. The also for A is strictly around instructional staff.
Right. So, wouldn't we want the timing description of when this all is expected to take place to apply to both of those areas?
We will make sure that prior to the 28th, and when we provide a full presentation to the Board, Mr. Delaney has an opportunity to weigh in on any adjustments that need to be made, but I will make sure we say to him specifically that we want clear timelines in here around taking action.
Yeah. But this is really well-done to see that we have this need, and I'm very glad that we're all taking action on this. I think also, community members will be very relieved to see this action.
I agree. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to Board Member Requests.
We have several that are already laid out already. There's about 6 of them already laid out for the future.
Yes, and I do, I do want to, I do want to just explain any requests that the Board brings forward. So, the responsibility of setting the agenda falls on the Chair and the Superintendent to set the agenda. Mr. Furry and I will look at the agenda to make sure that the agenda are items that we can address in the timeframe that is laid out for you as a Board to come together. And so, as requests come in, we field the requests in alignment with timeline for staff to be able to prepare the information, as well as how will this fit in on the timeframe alongside of the items that we need to do in a more timely manner. And so, that is why you may see a request, you may make a request, and that request has not yet been brought forward to you. If you ever have a question about a request, you can always ask directly to me, and I'll let you know where we have slated it in. We want to just make sure that we can be mindful of the timeframe that you as a Board have for these meetings, as well as for our staff. We've all been in that position where we're sitting in the meeting, it's supposed to be 2 hours, and we're, you know, 3 and 1/2 hours in. And so, that's the process for us getting those Board Member requests on. So, if you have made a request, if you do not see your request listed, then please bring that to my attention. That means I have failed to write that down, but please know that we are going to get to all of the requests. If there is something that is of urgent timeline, when you make your request, you can seek approval from the rest of the Board Member to expedite that, meaning we will get that on and, you know, maybe skip some other items that are already on that list.
Well, I'm feeling like as a Board during this component, wouldn't it be apropos to strategize maybe the priority order of those items? Because when we are speaking to you or others, we don't necessarily know what other requests are being submitted all of the time, and that, you know, we may want to say, oh, okay, I could see that maybe this item should be discussed before X item.
So, I just made myself a note, on the upcoming Board Discussion Topics, and it is not there, and I do apologize, but there will be a list of those topics, and so you as a Board can definitely bring that forward to say, here are the items, here's the ones that we want in whatever timeframe you would like that to be brought before you. Some items, they do take prep for the staff, and so we have to go out and gather the information and develop for the presentation for you, so that takes a little bit longer. Gifted Services is one of those items. We don't want to just bring before you, but we survey where are we currently with gifted services across our district, so we can bring that forward, and then you can give us clear direction. So, I will make sure in the upcoming Board Discussion Topics that that list is there, and then if at the next meeting you would like to prioritize that list, an order for that list, I will be open to it. I'm sure the Chair will be open to it as well.
Well, the marathon contract is obviously a timely thing in that it's already been signed, but those.
The marathon contract is on, it's already scheduled for your January 28th meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to closing comments.
Well, I like to say it's been really awesome with all the activity, with all the campuses, faculty, all the involvement, and everything that I've heard from everyone, like parents, community members, people emailing and just calling, like random strangers, they feel really like loved in Flagler, so it's been pretty neat. So, and even our tech team, I have to give a shout-out, if you can hear, they're all at the schools like after hours, and I don't think people realize that. I didn't realize that, and, I mean, kudos, like they're going around, so good job, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would just like to brag about Flagler County a little bit. I don't know if you guys saw in the news, but Seminole County is in the news because they're ramping up a fire and EMT preparation program in association with their school districts, so it sounds like we're, you know, having some influence there, and that's exciting. And speaking of those programs, meeting with Director Kirkland on the FTC initiatives, a lot of exciting things, and some very creative solutions to challenges that are coming up, so I'm looking forward to attending that SAC meeting. I also want to shout out BTMS. I've had daughters attend both ITMS and BTMS, and I recently met with the leadership there, Ms. Kronk and others, and they have done an amazing job with the culture of that school. The vibe, the energy, the students are motivated, there are programs not just for students who are having difficulty or those excelling, but those who are also in the middle and want to have recognition and rewards, as we all do. And had a great discussion about some of her strategies and the team's strategies in order to deepen the level of rigor that's going on in the classrooms there. And that can only happen if the staff is really open and willing to that. And so, the progress for those initiatives this year has been definitely larger. I think this is a big growth year for Buddy Taylor. So, I just want to shout them out. Amazing place, great, great quality education going on, and I'm looking forward to seeing it pay out with fabulous results this year.
Just, I'll bring up more at our next Board Meeting, but just a couple of things, just to shout out for our transportation folks. Several of our Board Members here were able to be there early at 5:30 in the morning to see our transportation folks and the great work that they're doing, and our aides, and just really appreciate the work they're doing, and the changes that have to take place during the day and during the schedules, and making things work, and being able to push out information and make sure that our community understands that they have a problem, and issues and concerns, and where they need to go to address those concerns related to transportation. So, I just really want to give a shout-out to those folks who are doing an amazing job every day. Tomorrow, I'm sorry, yeah, Thursday, SAC at Remfire, looking forward to participating there and spending some time at Old Kings Elementary on Friday. And today was our first Community Traffic Safety Team meeting, and working with Commissioner Dance and that team. And I've got some things to bring back to the district that I learned that I'll bring to Tom. Tommy, he was on that call today, too. So, just look forward to working with these different groups that we're all working and have in our purview to really make, again, as I say, make Flagler Schools what it is, and just really appreciate the openness that we're receiving from all these different entities to be able to help move Flagler forward.
Yeah. I know we're off to running here on our second quarter, so excited to see how everything goes for the rest of this year. Mr. Furry, I hope you feel better. I'm seeing a lot of sick people right now, so everybody wash their hands, take your vitamin C, and try to keep those viruses down. That's it.
Thank you.
I thought Mr. Furry was chiming in at one point.
Are you done, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. So, great first meeting of the year. Looking forward to 2025, started from the energy that we have. Seen all of you out there and giving out with the various events that we had to kick off the back-to-school here, so just very encouraged by that. And wish I could have been there today, that you could hear from that voice, recovering from a pretty serious cold here, but I'm on the mend, and I'll be back soon. I want to thank by his time for doing an exceptional job reading the meeting today and my assets.
Are there any comments for you?
Have a great day. Happy 87th day of school.
Great. This meeting is a.